Hello, how are you guys doing?
Oh, hi Bill.
You're okay, how are you?
Good.
Good. Up here's Tori.
We're all showing up on time here. A little early.
We were just saying, we have to get this straight. Do these meetings start at seven or 7:15?
Because I thought it was seven.
Yeah.
The alarm started at 7:15 and somehow the last meeting got set for seven o'clock.
Yeah.
And this began the agenda, it had 7:15.
Right, but it always is going to be 7:15.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Right, I mean unless we want to change that, and I think we're actually supposed to, I think one of the things we're supposed to talk about today is the schedule for the year. So if we want to change to seven o'clock, you know, I used to always want it to be 7:15 because I always knew I'd need an extra couple of minutes to get from Hartford.
Yeah, I know you said that last time, so we kind of figured, well, probably is seven o'clock.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know if we formally did anything about it. And since we're doing it, are we doing?
Still eating cookies Sharon, hi Tori.
I guess we haven't done it yet, we're supposed to do the meeting calendar.
Yeah. Uh oh.
Sorry?
We have that all done.
I thought we did that already.
Yeah, it's all done.
Did we do it in January?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, it was included on the menu, on the agenda.
Oh, really?
Let me see.
I know we have it all done.
Yeah, it's 2022 meeting calendar, but I thought we did that already.
Yeah, we did.
Wait, hold on. That's the budget meeting.
Yeah, it's under new business, but I know I have it on my calendar.
Let me see what I got here.
You're making me want to go out and get a cookie.
Um, let's see, I'm looking.
I have my little bag share.
I'm looking at the meeting, I'm looking at the January 20th meeting.
Right.
And there is nothing, there is nothing there about that, let's see. No, that's the January 20th again.
Well, I have it on my tablet, the whole meeting schedule for the whole year.
Yeah, I have April 7th.
Okay, then we must have done that.
May 5th, yeah.
Take our word for it, Bill, we did it.
October 6th, September 1st, October 6th, yeah, I have them all, Bill.
Okay.
Do we have to do something motion-wise to change the time?
Is it down for 7:15?
Well, no, I, what do you, okay, since you have the document in front of you, what does that say about our meetings?
Um, I have seven o'clock, on April 7th, I have seven o'clock.
Right.
Okay, then let's just make sure we're clear that from now on, we're going to do seven o'clock.
Right.
Works for me.
Yep, me too.
Hi Tori.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm doing okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Good. How's little Archie?
Oh. He's down there.
Yeah, he heard a skunk outside a couple nights ago and I didn't let him out because I knew there was something and
Yeah.
And our last outing before bed, ooh, you can smell it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
What did you clean him up with?
Pardon me?
What did you clean him with?
Well, he, uh, he didn't get skunked. It was a skunk, yeah, and my neighbor, he has Vishlas and he said his dogs were just going nuts.
Oh, yeah.
So there was a skunk on, on South Street between River Road and Flag Swamp.
Well, there's a dead one, there's a dead one in the road right around there today.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Sharon, I can only see the top of your head.
Oh.
Unless you get closer.
What are we looking at?
No, I was looking at, I was, I just saw the top of Sharon's head, I didn't see her whole face.
I thought there was something that we needed to, you know, unicorn horn or something.
I didn't change my pictures yet, I tell my grandchildren, my little one, he's got to make me something to put back there because those are old.
That's okay.
They're all getting, they're all getting old though, you know, they don't do that anymore, you know, they don't want to do that, they're, they're getting too old.
Well, they just need to do more sophisticated art for you.
Whatever, there you go.
So my grandson said he's looking forward to the Street Patrick's Day.
Oh, what's he gonna do?
Three Patrick's Day.
Well, that's good, I think he's starting a whole new holiday.
I think so too.
Why not? Excuse me, I'm gonna sneeze.
Bless you. Bless you.
Well, that was only a couple, that's good, I usually do five, six. Terrible, I'm gonna sneeze.
Is he in Italy?
I'm sorry?
Is Kenny good with this, or is he in Italy?
Oh, I don't know.
Probably in Italy.
Yeah, if he is, it is a little late there. It's probably like, I don't know if it's 12:15 or 12:18 or 1:18.
Well, it's 20 after seven now.
Right, I think they're either five or six hours difference depending upon.
Time of year?
Yeah, you know, daylight savings time or not, whatever.
Changes this week, right?
I don't know, does it?
This weekend, does it?
Well, the 14th. I heard something in the news that said, and I couldn't believe it, I was like, wait a minute, it's the middle of March.
It's next, the 13th and 14th, next weekend.
Okay.
Let me see.
There's Jen.
There she is.
Hey Jen.
I don't see her.
I see a still picture.
It's a still picture, here she comes.
Yeah, March 13th.
Okay.
Who's in our sleep on March 13th? And we should be happy about that.
Hi Jen.
Hi guys.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you guys tonight?
Okay. We're good.
All right, so, um, a call is ordered and everybody seems here.
Okay.
Oh, Kenny's not here.
Right.
Ken's not here.
I don't take a whole way for him.
Well, you know, it depends, if he's on the road, he's, you know, he's in Italy, it's 11 o'clock at night or.
Yeah, exactly.
What if, you know, so he made, I did not hear from him, you know, oftentimes when we send him the, the agenda, he'll, he'll respond to me or the group, I guess depends just on his whim, that he won't be able to make it. Or he will, so having not seen anything, I mean, we can wait a little longer or, you know, we can just kind of get through the first couple of things, I'm sure he won't be.
Oh, let's start, I mean, going to 25 after now.
Yeah, let's get going.
Let's get going, yeah.
So, uh, let's see. Number one, our approval of the minutes of, um, last month's February 3rd meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Seems. No, I'm sorry, yeah. Seems, right, wait a minute, was the last, wasn't the last meeting where we did all, where we talked about the budget? Or was that the 20th?
That was January.
Yeah.
That was the one before.
Social meeting.
Yep, no, because all this stuff looked familiar and I'm like, wait a minute, is that what we did the last time we met? So, um, that, this all seems in line.
I didn't see any pages to be made, so.
Me either, it looked good.
Okay, great, so we approve the minutes, all in favor, I think we have to vote on it.
Aye.
Aye, aye, passes with everybody's.
Yep.
Okay. I mean, by the way, Jen, the person I was reaching out to had moved to New Preston about the secretary job. Moved to New Preston and she's not interested at all. But Barbara Josephson's daughter apparently is, and did she talk to you?
Yeah. Actually, I spoke with Barbara Josephson and had her, I, um, sent an email to Patrick and I also, um, spoke with Barbara Josephson and had told her to have her daughter-in-law contact Patrick directly.
Great, great, that's how they want to do it, it's fine. Good, and hopefully he'll be okay and we'll be able to use somebody at the end of the year and at least get him a little bit broken in so that next year be, you know, a little bit more.
Be ready to go.
You know, who knows, maybe she'll even get an opportunity to do it for some of the other boards.
Yeah, maybe the library, I think they're looking as well.
Yeah, oh no, I think everybody's probably
Yeah.
looking for somebody who's willing to do something, you know, that stuff.
And that money's already approved in the budget, right, so?
Um, yes, actually, it was approved for this, this budget year when Linda, um, did the budget last year. Um, and, um, it's actually in line one, um, which is up to the first election. And what I didn't realize at the time though, um, that line one, uh, where it's the hourly salary, also includes the, um, the person who cleans the buildings because, um, it, originally it was an outside company and, um, that was, it had its own separate line. And when he passed and then Sarah Foreman took it over, um, it was, that money was moved to the hourly budget. And so they had decided to, um, to hire in-house and not through a separate company. So that person will continue to be paid, um, that from the hourly line in the budget, um, which I have no control over.
Okay.
So, would have been, it would have been nice for Kim to have let us know that that sort of stuff was going on. Because the budget looked an awful lot like it always has looked. But whatever, you know, footnoting though would have been, would have been a little helpful in that. When we actually voted on the budget that we voted for. But, but I thought cleaning services was in that budget.
Um, it is, it's actually its own separate line.
Yeah.
But that was, it was its own separate line because it was an outside company, it was an outside contractor. And so when he, when he passed and they rehired, they just did it in-house, they didn't use an outside company. So the town absorbed the.
Budget we approved, wasn't that cleaning budget line on there?
Yes.
Yeah. I, I, I had, I did not know, I didn't know.
No, no, I'm right, I mean, you were given the information from, from the town.
Yeah.
Uh, so, I don't know, it's kind of confusing, um, but I'm sure they'll sort it out. I do hope we have a secretary, well, we certainly have not used all the money that we were supposed to use for a secretary anywhere for this year. So, and hopefully they'll, they'll sort it out and, you know, I mean, there's plenty, from what we voted on, there's plenty of money in there for both, right?
Sure is. So I mean, I, when I, I was actually in Patrick's office and he, it was for something else and he, um, kind of gave me the budget and said, hey, I want you to relook at some of these things, and one of them was the Glowforge. And, um, there is money in other places for the Glowforge for me to, to, to put it in place. Um, so I took that out of the programming budget. And, um, I also, of course, um, reduced that whole line, um, for, um, for the outside cleaning service. And, um, yeah, so we're actually going to have, um, a surplus, I think of around $3,000. Give or take, that depends on if certain programs are, um, are going to be popular and some may not be. So that gets like the little give and take, and if there's anything at the end, it'll be used for, uh, programming. So that's where, that's kind of where we were.
So, so in the end, we're able to keep, you're able to keep the Glow, the Glowforge?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I am, um, but it's going to come from a different, um, totally different budget than ours.
Okay, so when you were having to rework the budget, we had said the Glowforge might be something that we would
Yeah.
be able to live without, you were somehow able to.
And, and you know, in, in speaking with Ken, you know, it was, you know, I don't, I really don't mind taking it out as long as it's, it's not off the table, um, completely. I would really like to bring in some really, um, different kind of, um, technology into that, into the building. And the Glowforge is a really great gateway, um, for men's programs, but for, you know, the ability to, um, you know, use technology in a really positive way and helps with dexterity, you can actually build and create things, um, using the technology platform that comes with it. And, um, and it might be a great fundraiser for the friends as well, because you can make kits and sell them and, and there's this, it's really just, you know, the possibilities are limitless, but, but that, I mean, it's not something that's going to happen in my particular budget, in our budget for the senior center.
Yeah, I mean, I think that was our, our main concern was that we
Yeah.
Quite high, but to, we'll put it this way, to pass the budget we wound up passing and still have the Glowforge, I mean, I'm, you know, I, yeah, I suspect we're still going to have to raise some of our fees for things, you know, to be, to the kinds of things we talked about, but, if, if, uh, you know, if outside of our budget, you're able to get that done, that's great.
Awesome.
I, I spoke with Teresa today, um, from the library. And I talked to her about, um, maybe, uh, doing some collaborative programs and seeing where her shortfalls were and where mine might be and where we can kind of come together, um, to do some programming. And she suggested, um, outreach to the school, and I know that that's something that, you know, the friends and I talked about, um, at their last meeting. And, um, so, her, I think she kind of was like, how about we collaborate with the school and do something with the school? Um, and so that means littles and that means, you know, I don't know how that's all going to work out. Um, but certainly it's something that, you know, we can, we can talk about and, um, so to bring in some sort of an intergenerational kind of a program. Um, maybe a one-off.
That sounds great.
Yeah.
We, we've talked about that many times in the past to, you know, figure out ways we can do it, except we really haven't talked about it much in the last two years.
Right.
Because of obvious restrictions and problems with having, you know, young people and older, older people together. You know, and I think, I think the only thing that might be problem, not problematic, just a little difficult, you might find some people that are still a little nervous. But interacting with runny-nosed children.
Sure.
We go to school to incubate, um, uh, small viruses and, and all kinds of bacteria. But I think, I do think it's something that, you know, from my perspective is long overdue because I think it's a very, not only physically because of our space apart, but also, um, because there is certainly a connection between older people and younger people. You know, are at that, that age and, you know, even things like oral histories or just making people available to read to kids or to encourage other things that, I think there's, there's lots of opportunity provided people want to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And maybe when the weather gets nicer, do something outdoors.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, um, I was approached, um, by someone about a hiking group, which is great. And we had it in Woodbury and it was really, really popular and, um, so maybe if, maybe they could do a hike, you know, the seniors and the, and the juniors can do a hike together and go exploring in nature together. Something.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, even, even if they're just walking in the historic district, you know?
Yeah.
If you've got a person who, who, you know, little kids really don't want to listen about houses for the most part, they just want to go out.
They might have to do something, yeah.
They might look at the leaves in the water.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We shouldn't portray our people as fossils, we should portray our people as being energetic and enthusiastic.
Well, we're like their grandparents, you know?
Yeah, well, without, without quite having the same, uh, uh, impact day to day. But, but no, I do agree, I think there's, there's lots of, of mutual opportunities that can be examined by your generational stuff, so.
Absolutely.
I think it's great, I think by all means, you know,
Yep.
explore. And if the school is good with it, you know, you, you may find the school's not good with it, I don't know. We, we should just see what, what we can do, even if it's, you know, for us to have things that we're doing and give them some stuff to do it too, you know, I don't, you know.
Like Christmas ornaments, Virginia.
Oh, yeah. That was fun. That was fun, that was fun.
Yeah.
And if we have lasers, boom.
My arts and crafts ability is very limited as everyone knows. So, if you show me how to do something, maybe I can do it. But come up with it myself, nah, not going to happen. Not going to happen. But I think that would be great to somehow get the seniors and the kids involved in. As we were saying at the friends meeting, there is going to be a new principal in September at Booth. Kathy Kalala is retiring. Um, so there will be a brand-new principal for Booth at Burnham, I presume. Because they, they handle, that principal handles both schools. So, you know, there, there's an opportunity to, you know, to kind of get in on the ground floor with a new principal.
Maybe it could be a great.
Not that Kathy wasn't good, she was great, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everything is colored by the last two years.
It could be a grand day where they could bring their grandparents and we could bring our grandchildren.
Wouldn't that be fun?
Wouldn't that be fun?
That would be fun. That would be fun.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Great idea.
All right, anything else, where are we on the agenda?
Just if, if Jen has any other stuff she wants to report and ideas.
We've had, we've had really, um, we're starting to get really, um, good feedback from the programs, I would say, um, and, uh, we've had, or I've had people, um, sign up for programs that have never come before.
Oh, wonderful.
Which is really great.
Yeah.
Yep, so I have, we have seven new people, uh, this month, um, just from the March newsletter. And, um, yeah, I'm really excited about that.
Well, that's wonderful.
How are we doing with people just
Thanks.
coming in and doing the things they were doing, you know, not only for those exercise things, I know we're not, we're not doing any food right now. But, you know, are, are we seeing people at least poking their heads out and starting to get comfortable and
Yes.
the idea of coming back into the building and, you know, right, I mean, we're, we're, we're following what the state guideline is, which is not mandatory.
Yeah.
Masking, right, so.
Yeah.
Are we, are we seeing people feel, you know, acting like maybe normalcy might be coming?
Yes, yes, I, I think, I think they are, um, kind of getting, getting over that, uh, that trauma. You know, that COVID trauma for two years, you know, where it's like, you know, can we take a mask off, can we talk to somebody, do we want to be next to somebody, do we want to try, do we want to, you know, and things are open, things are closed, and I think that's had a really profound effect on people, especially seniors, and especially senior centers, I mean, because, you know, our job is, you know, is that, uh, that communication, is that, you know, that togetherness, and I think that, um, people are starting to trust that things are going to get better. You know, and I, and I think that there, I do feel that momentum and I am starting to see that momentum in people. You know, people are starting to talk about ideas like, hey, how about we go try to go to this restaurant? Or have you heard about this, you know, whereas before it was really quiet? Now there's a lot more input, which is fantastic, it's fantastic.
I think people are really looking forward to things getting back to so-called normal.
Yeah.
More, more things going on, yeah.
Absolutely.
Have a mask on all the time.
And, and the various bus trips and so forth that they be subscribed to well and are we seeing?
There are some more than others, I think, um, certainly there is, you know, the Rock Spirit Group is a lot different than like, you know, the Woodbury Group or what have you. We have a really robust, uh, we, or we had a really robust travel program, which was on the road again. And, um, I mean, you guys can attest to the fact, I mean, Sharon and Virginia especially, you know, that they pretty much have gone everywhere, done everything. They've been all over the state, you know, it's like, do we want to go back to the, you know, do we want to go back to the Yale, you know, like, you know, so, um, it certainly is, it makes my job a lot more interesting and, um, and exciting, and so that's why I'm really glad that we are going to be having these trips where we can rent a bus and we can kind of go to New York or we can go to, you know, the Berkshires or something like that, you know, where we can kind of, you know, different, go something different, you know, experience something different.
Yep.
So, um, you know, the trip tomorrow, I think has four people. Which just, which is not a huge group at all, you know, but.
There's only four of us?
Four.
Really?
Really? Whereas, whereas the Flower Show had, you know, 11.
Yep.
And it, it was, it was full, but the gentleman from New Milford couldn't go on the Saturday on the snow day. You know, the, had a snow day for that trip. And, but otherwise that would have been a really full trip, so it's just kind of, you know, figuring out what's popular and, and what's not. And that's the way it is anyway, some will be a hit and some will be a miss, but even though, even though there's only four people going, you know, if those four people have a great time.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it.
Yeah. I'm ready to go.
Miniature golf, sounds pretty cool.
That place is going to be awesome, I wish I was going.
Looks like it's going to be fun, they have bowling and all kinds of other stuff, so.
Yep.
Pretty fun.
Yeah, and like you said, though, not everything appeals to everyone and you can't, you can't assume you're ever going to find, you know, that's going to happen every, every time, you're going to have many times that it's oversubscribed and you've just got to keep trying stuff and sometimes that leads to being undersubscribed. Yes, I don't agree with the idea necessarily that because you've been to a lot of places, again, you haven't been to any place in two years, so it, it's not like, like if you're going back down to the Yale Art Museum or, you know, someplace down in Stanford or something like that. The last time we probably did it was two or three years ago and, and exhibits change. You know, part of the reason you like going to New Haven is because it's got some fun restaurants nearby.
Yeah.
Certain things, you know, so, so I mean, it's, it's some of the other stuff too, so, so again, I, I just encourage you to try to find neat stuff and not be.
I personally, I personally like to go to the New Britain.
Yeah.
That is my favorite, yeah, I love that place.
I could, I could go there, you know, several times and I, I especially like the guard at the door.
Yeah, but also part of it, part of it's what you do when you get there or what you're doing on your way home. Stop and eat some place, you know, it's just all that stuff that, you know, goes under the, under the headline of fellowship that, um, you know, you're just trying to promote, it's, it's, you know, it, it, so just keep trying stuff, you know, there's no, there's no, really is, it's, it's very hard to fail. You'd say, some, you know, the next thing, you got four people. You're not going to be, you're going to have too many, you're not going to have enough seats. So, it, it, it works itself out.
So, Tai Chi, Tai Chi is that capacity.
Yeah, it's really good.
Tai Chi is indoor now, right?
Yeah.
And I've had, I've had a few, a couple more people ask me if there was room in the Tai Chi.
We might end up bringing back a second day of Tai Chi, you know, that, which is, which is fantastic.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah. I mean, I used, I used to remember, I used to stay at a, I used to stay at an inn in San Francisco and it was right on a, on a place called Washington Square Park, it was, you know, a sizable patch of green, but, you know, not like Central Park, it was, you know, a couple of blocks of green. And, um, every morning there would be Tai Chi outside. So it's San Francisco, but still San Francisco gets cold, sometimes it's wet and they're out there all the time, so, you know, I think Tai Chi is a, a wonderful thing and if they can do it indoors and outdoors at times, they'll probably be.
Well, the instructor, we have talked about possibly having it outdoors at some point, or at least try it, but, we'll have to see.
Yeah, and if you, doesn't work out, you just make sure you've got the indoors available.
Yep.
It rains.
And you're going to have to get matching outfits.
I don't know about that, Tori.
Sharon, I can only see the top of your head.
Check the weather report, you know?
There you go, Sharon.
You don't have to see any more of me.
Yes, we do.
So a trip for the very far future is. For the very far future is Wegmans is coming to Connecticut, they're gonna.
No, finally.
That would be a great trip, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, but they haven't even booked it.
Yep. Okay, do we want?
Start in Norwalk.
Yeah, they all started in Norwalk, you're right. Do you want a report from the Friends? Are we done with?
Yeah, whatever, yes, if 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 Jen's kind of.
Yeah, Jen, you you keep going, whatever you need to do.
Nope, I'm contributed out, I'm good.
Okay, good.
Okay. Um, we did meet yesterday morning. Um. I I don't know if we talked, no, we didn't talk about this last time because I didn't, we didn't have the Friends meeting. Barbara Josephson is the new president of the Friends. And she got a call from Patrick McKenna. Who is. Working with the town for, what is it called, Jen? The American Recovery?
It's the ARPA funds.
Yes, well, whatever that means.
The Recovery Act.
The Recovery Act. And. He let her know that there was ninety-five hundred dollars available to the Friends. From that Recovery Act. Forty-five hun- forty-five hundred of that. Is to be used for the my. What is it, Jen?
Senior Center?
My Senior Center, the, um, the check-in system.
Program.
Yep, that we have.
They're gonna pay for it.
Yep, that they're gonna pay for the whole program, the forty-five hundred. And then the other five thousand is going to go directly to the Friends, which is a huge amount of money for Friends. Um, we had to fill out a survey, which we did together. And sent that in. So I don't know what the timeline is on that. But, um, so the my Senior Center will be covered. And an additional five thousand to the Friends to use for whatever. Which is, you know, just free money, you know, falling out of the sky, so it's. It it it's great. Um. Jen talked to us about, she was at our meeting, and she talked to us about. Um, starting, I think, in the April newsletter, starting April first. All of the classes that are being held at the Senior Center will be hybrid. They, there was a new TV screen purchased and some other. IT stuff that Jen and Jimmy rigged up. And so now anybody who wants to, that's the girl. And then anybody who wants to take a class on Zoom. Um, will be able to do it. So all of the classes will be available to everybody on hybrid. If they so choose.
Are those classes limited to those that happen upstairs? We, I mean, you set it up and leave it, or?
Yeah, we will, it, this, this TV can go upstairs or downstairs, it can travel. It has its own, uh, capability to, um, get onto the internet. Um, we can stream movies from it, TV shows, um, we can do Zoom from it, which is what we'll probably use to, um. To Zoom all of the programs, like exercise programs or hybrid. And even if we had like a lecture program, so if we bring like, um, for example, like Mary Shinkian to talk about, uh, uh. Estate law or estate planning. Um, and somebody's not able to attend in person or cannot attend or doesn't feel comfortable. We can actually do that on Zoom, and they can interact because the screen is so big, it's like a complete interaction. So you'll be able to see them and interact with them, and they'll be able to see you and interact with you.
Which is, that's great.
Yeah, it is.
There should be no reason why anybody has to go, uh, anywhere else unless, you know, they're offering something that we're not. But I doubt that that's gonna be the way.
Yep.
Great.
So if it's a rainy day and they don't want to drive and go out, they could just participate on Zoom.
Yep.
Um, we all.
All the programming still would originate. From our.
From the center.
And and it would just be basically televised.
Right.
You know, as you select.
Yep.
Great.
Um, Jen gave us an update on, um, the internet at the Senior Center, which I guess is extremely slow and antiquated and whatever. And what they're going to do rather than dig up the street. And put in a fiber, is it called fiber optics?
Mm-hmm.
Cable or whatever, I'm getting there. Um, they're gonna beam it. I'm trying, they're gonna beam it from booth-free school. And kind of piggyback off of theirs, which is what the library does. So that they won't have to spend all that money to put in that fiber optic cable. And that, since that budget, that money is budgeted, Jen, already to dig up the street, it's already budgeted.
Budgeted to the Senior Center.
It's budgeted to the Senior Center, so if we don't use it to dig up the street. Then you'll have extra money. In theory.
I don't know if they work it that way. Works budget as anything.
That's what they're gonna, they're just gonna send it over to us. Um.
Well, no, when you say the, you're gonna beam it, what are you, what are you saying? There's going to be some sort of Wi-Fi booster that we use. That taps into.
Have to tell you.
The school?
So. It's, uh, the. Fiber optic cables normally run underground. And, um, it, there was, this job was budgeted for the fact that it was going to have to be, uh, channeled underneath the street. And then brought to the Senior Center. Um, however, they are able to, um, you know, use lasers and magic. And and use it from booth-free school, they might have to cut a few branches or whatever, and beam that, um. Directly to the Senior Center, we wouldn't be limited by any, you know, uh, uh, hours of the school or anything else like that. But, um, so it's, it's much like how the, the library gets its internet access. Um, it's quick, it's, uh, and, you know.
Assume there's gotta be something. That receives somewhere rather than. Just sending beams willy nilly into the building.
Yeah, it's a little beam, yeah.
And 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 with that, there will be, um, upgrades to to our infrastructure, so.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great. Um, we also talked, Jen also talked about, um, Jen's daughter came into the Senior Center one day while she was home. And did a, a quick one hour, um, I think iPhone class, kind of. With seniors who signed up for, and there were three or four or five. Seniors who signed up and came in. And she was able to help them with just some basic stuff on their phones that. They probably didn't know they could do, or had difficulty doing, or whatever. So there is a need out there for some. Tech kind of classes, you know, iPad classes, um, whatever. So Jen was thinking, um, that maybe as a senior project, that might be something that someone can do. Over the course of the school year for seniors or community service hours. Because the Chappaq kids all need community service hours.
Yeah.
So that might be something that they could come in, you know, one, two, three times, whatever. And help out the seniors and whatever, I think there's a real need for that. I think there's a lot of people that have a phone that really. You know, basically make a call on it.
Yeah.
You know, and don't.
We tried to do, we tried to make things available. We're seeing is also using computers at one time, that's. Part of the reason we, that whole front room is set up the way it is. And I think we've not necessarily had great response. Um. Now, maybe because the phone is right in your pocket. It's still prevalent, you know, the computer, you still have to go over to your computer to do something, right? But with a phone, it it's, it's omnipresent. Um, I mean, I think it's a great. Thing to to offer as much as possible, but I do think people are reluctant. To, you know, to come in and even show their ignorance.
Jen, how many people?
No, I had, I had to limit it last.
You had a few people, didn't you? You had like five or six?
I had to limit it, um. And I think with, you know, them phasing out, a 3G network is gonna be phased out. And a lot of seniors use like the cricket phones and like flip phones, and those are all gonna be phased out. So they're gonna have to move to a, uh, like a smartphone. And a lot of seniors are having a, a tough time with that. So they they're, you know, they're gonna need help.
Yeah. Well, I I I think anything we can do to to provide a regular opportunity to. Uh, you know, to give people help. Is great, and as I said, we've, we've always, this board, uh, for, for the last seven, eight years, it's often about. The, the, you know, that digital divide in the senior community.
Right.
Um, and and even though, you know. Going on Zoom is, i- i- is something that we do take for, you know, granted, do it all the time. Um, uh, because we're in this or other things that we do, there are some that that don't, that that wouldn't.
At all.
Know the first thing about it.
No. And they're, and they're very hesitant about it because they're, you know.
Don't really wanna know about it.
They don't wanna know because they, you know, they're figuring they're gonna mess it up.
Right, that's right, they're afraid they're gonna break it, and.
Yeah, they're gonna break it.
Anything we can do to help diminish that, that sense, even would be great. You know, we don't get everybody to be, you know, very, you know, good users of, you know, the electronic world. As long as we can sort of demystify it a little bit, we might be able to help people out.
Mm-hmm. Well, I mean, you had, what, five, six people there that day, Jen?
Yeah, I limited it to to five people, because I knew that it was gonna be. A lot, um. And and it was, and it, it was supposed to be an hour and a half, and Rhiannon was there, I think, three hours.
Yeah, well, because everybody had different questions and, you know.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, uh, uh, uh. The more, the more we can do on that, the better, I mean, if, you know. We can keep people, if we can keep people. You know, if we can teach people to be engaged in the internet and keep them from falling down, we're really doing a great job.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean. Things that really are bugaboo to our, to our group, you know, balance and technology.
Yep.
You know, and I don't.
We have somebody coming in in April.
I mean, it sounds kind of funny, but but I don't mean it like that, I mean it, that that would be a great impact on, on the people who we serve.
Yeah, yeah, all our exercise classes, emphasis, a lot of it is on balance.
Absolutely, and it's not, you know, we've always very much encouraged that idea. As long as I've been on this board.
So I am thinking that, uh, technology about the phone or iPad or whatever. Should almost be a continuing program so that. You know, you do this thing, and then they go home for a week and they practice that, and then they come back and they learn how to.
Right.
Do the next, next step, instead of overloading them with too many details. So it can be like a month-long program. Or longer.
Yep.
I mean, it, you know, Lauren, um. Uh, Ray and Woodbury started that very thing, uh, and it's. It's so popular. It really is, it it showed a real need. Um, and she started off with just the basics, and so, uh, you know, one week she did, you know, how to turn it on, how to, how to access Wi-Fi. Um, what does it mean when you use your minutes? Um, what does unlimited really mean? Those kinds of things, and then it was, okay, how to take a picture and store your picture? What is the, what's the cloud? How do you use the cloud to store your pictures? How do you get a picture from the cloud? And then she kind of went through. And by the end, she was teaching people to, you know, upload their pictures to like, um, Shutterfly and things to make projects. And make books, and.
Yeah.
Those kinds of things, so, I mean, it was really like from the very beginning all the way to the end, so. And she's run that, I think, three times already, um, by the time I.
And how, how long did that, does that program, what what's the duration of that program?
So she did it, I think, uh, over three or four weeks, and it was an hour and a half, but it always went to like two hours, two minutes. Because we had to limit it, you know, because, you know, otherwise we would just be bombarded and we wouldn't be able to help everyone, we wouldn't be able to get anywhere.
Yeah.
So.
And what did you, and and she would limit it, the, she would limit the.
Signups.
Size, so to speak, as well.
Yeah, and so, and she would run it in like a four, three or four-week program, um, and. So that way, when it finished, she could start another. Another series, starting from the beginning, so if somebody didn't get in there, or if somebody only wanted to know, or they already had the experience with turning it on. But wanted to know how to do, you know, uh, pictures and books, you know. It just, that's, it really worked out well. And I, I have somebody coming in, eh, at the end of April, and he's going to start to teach, um, IT.
Nice.
Yeah. But it, but still, there's, there's definite room for, um, students to come in and and really give us their expertise and. Sit down and do some like one-on-one or, yeah, definite. More than just a, like a one month, once a month kind of thing.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, that's great.
We also talked about, um, doing some kind of a fundraiser perhaps in the fall. Um, doing some kind of a fall festival kind of thing outside, hopefully. Then doing some burgers and hot dogs and, you know, doing some kind of demos and. But we're just starting to talk about that. Just as a fundraiser for the, for the Friends, because we really haven't done anything. Um, we are going to start soup sun. We only have two cooks, Carol, my sister-in-law Carol, Deeber Toll and I. And so we're going to do it once a month, starting on May tenth. And we're going to take reservations, it's going to be indoors. We're going back inside. Um.
Yay.
Yay. Jen is, um, Jen's gonna give us a count of how many. You know, tables and chairs, how many people can we, can we see, we're gonna do one seating. Um, and we're going to start that way and see how it goes, um. And we're gonna try to do, I was saying to Jen, uh. Carol and I are gonna try to do something a little bit more special than just a cup of soup, because it's like the grand reopening. Excuse me. So we're gonna do something. Um, you know, something a little different for that day. I don't know where my voice is going. Excuse me. My voice is going. Um, so that's May tenth, right? Jen, I think it was May tenth was the, was the first, the first day, and Jen graciously will be taking reservations. And when we hit that number, whatever it is, then that's it for that month, and we'll do June. Because Carol and I can probably, you know, we can do it once a month. But we really can't do it more than that, so we need people to cook. If we're gonna go to twice a month, we we definitely need people to cook. Um, I actually saw Mary Jackson in Shoprite today, and she said she'd be happy to help, but she can't cook. But she'd be happy to help somebody and prep and all of that, so, you know, maybe we'll get there. Excuse me, um. Jen also talked to us about a new idea that she has. About taking over the barn that's on the property. And spiffing it up. And make it more usable, because right now it's really not usable.
No, it's.
It it's, it's really kind of.
Isn't that part of the Historical Society?
I don't know.
But yes, yeah, it is part of the Historical.
But I've always been, been under the impression that it wasn't under our control, that somebody else. Sort of, you know, if we, like, when we used to use it for the Christmas holiday, you know, the holiday festival.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We didn't, we had to go through somebody to use it, and it wasn't the town. I believe, I might be wrong, but I, I was under the impression.
No, we had to go through the town, Bill.
Was that it?
Yeah.
Because they're pretty, you're right, they're pretty restrictive about what you can do in there.
Right, uh, and I mean, it is in such bad shape, I mean, there's. There's rats and bats and. All kinds of stuff.
Yeah, it's like Mrs. Havisham's like Christmas bizarre, that's what, that's what's in there, it's like. Curious stages of Christmas decay.
Yeah, it needs to be, uh.
There's a lot of bat poop.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's certainly something our group should not be taking on.
I mean. I think that, I mean, if it happens, Jen, the town needs to get in there and do some major work.
World domination.
World domination.
So, so we did talk a little bit, we did talk a little bit about that at the Friends, I'm just reporting what we talked about.
Yeah.
And we, we did talk about, um, you know, that. That goal of someday getting that barn into a usable shape, because it really is right now.
Yeah, I mean, it could be such a beautiful venue for so many things, but it, it is not safe now.
No, it's major, major renovation.
Um, the great part about it is, have you guys ever been to the basement?
No, I didn't even know there was a basement.
It's, yeah, it's pristine, so when, I, I'm not sure, but I think when they dug. Um, this barn used to belong to our neighbor. Uh, next door to us, and, um. I think there was some sort of a trade or something happened where they ended up getting that little piece of land that's, that's at the back of their property that, that. Um, touches onto Wellers Bridge and we got that barn. And, um, when the foundation was, was done for the building, for the renovation for Old Town Hall into the senior center. Um, I believe that's when that foundation was also done. And it's a, it's brand new. I mean, to look at the basement, you'd never know that an old, falling down barn was sitting on top of it. It's pristine.
You wouldn't even know that they had a basement.
Other than being, having bats in the barn.
Yep.
Is there, is there physical issues to the building?
Yes, um, yeah, yeah, there are, um.
And I recognize some floor rotting and things like that.
The floor is actually in decent condition. It's just some of the, some of the timbers are bent and twisted and. Um, it's not, you know, it's not, um, closed in, so it's. Yeah, so I. I met with Ed Katie Junior, actually, and he came in and looked at the barn and, uh. And, um, kind of, you know, gave us an idea of what, uh, what it would need. And, um, we went and, and I toured a barn that he's doing, a similar barn in, um, just over the, uh. The way in Bridgewater and absolutely gorgeous, of course, um, but I wanted it to be more of a. I'm hoping it is going to be a commons space. So I don't know if you've ever heard of like the Province Town Commons.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a, a similar, similar concept. Um, I'd like to have, you know, some office space in that loft area. And have like a kitchenette and, um, it'll need bathrooms and heat, I mean, uh, yeah, heat. And, um.
Water.
Yeah, and, and water, um, it'll probably have to have its own septic and own well. Uh, just because it would be too problematic to tie into what we have existing at the, at the, uh, senior center. Um, and. Uh, he suggested that I speak with Mr. Ness. And see what that would look like. And, uh, yeah, so it's, it's, it's very basic and, and, but to be able to expand and to use that space. Uh, would be wonderful, would be wonderful.
Well, it would be revenue for the, because it could be rented out for different weddings, parties.
Well, realistically.
We have a commercial kitchen in the senior center.
Realistically, it's not that big and we're, we're probably talking about needing to make an investment of about a quarter million dollars.
Oh, maybe more.
Yeah.
Maybe a little.
I mean, once you start talking about a new septic and water and bringing it up to code for electricity and not even dealing with the rotted parts.
I said to Jen, we need a, we need a, a philanthropist in town. Who would like to donate money.
Well, I agree with that, Virginia, but it's also something that you could fundraise for. You know, specifically, you know, fundraising for the barn raising kind of thing, you know, and. I think people love that barn so much that they would be, uh, they'd be happy to participate in whatever it was.
I mean, I, in a perfect world, I see, you know, uh, kilns and lathes and all of those kinds of things in the basement. And, um, and, you know, goat yoga in the, in that great, big, beautiful vaulted room, you know, like. You know, that kind of stuff, but, but certainly, um, a common space would be.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think. Yeah, good for you. I like it.
Yeah. So that's where we are with the Friends Report. That's pretty much what we did. And we're, we're looking forward to getting that Supeson going again inside in May.
Well, I for one, I'm happy to hear that.
Yeah, me too.
I think it's such an important part of the senior center, the Supeson and people getting together and, you know, talking and. And kind of keep Marilyn Keiner's momentum going.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Can't let it just go away.
No, no.
No, no, and, and, you know, especially when, you know, when you. It's like the senior center itself, right? I, I mean, part of the reason it even got started is because they wanted to keep a certain historic. Validity to the middle of town, you know, that part of town.
Yeah, that, that's why I think some fundraising events could be very successful.
All right, so that's where we are at the Friends. We got a lot done on Wednesday.
Great.
Problem.
Great. And did you guys talk about the Amazon Smile thing? How did we leave that?
Yes, we did, we did, we did talk about that. Brooke is going to take it over because I have kind of dropped the ball on it. So Brooke was going to look into it again and Jen is, Brooke is going to pass on some information to Jen. And Jen said she would be happy to look into that. To see, I think it's just basically paperwork that you have to do. Because we are already listed on Amazon Smiles. So when you go in and shop, you can check off Friends of the Roxbury Senior Center. But no money gets to us until we fill out the paperwork.
Right.
Which, you know.
They'll, they'll accrue whatever you've gotten up to now.
Yes.
Once you're legit.
I think there's a timeframe bill that if you don't, like, claim it like in two years, it goes somewhere else.
Right, yeah.
So if.
I'm sure they're gonna need, I'm sorry.
No, I said, you know, I'm sure once we get the paperwork done and we let people know through the newsletter or. And, you know, any other way that it'll start accruing.
Yeah, yeah, and I, and I do think once you start, once we are legit and we can actually take people, you know, step by step through what they should do and then. In the news, you know, even just a little point and run it every month.
Right.
Because some months people will see it, other people will see it at a different time, you know, they'll just, it'll take a little while for people to catch on, but. I just, you see these trucks everywhere. I mean, the amount of money that Amazon is handling.
Yep.
It's crazy.
Yep.
And, and even if it's just a, you know, the thinnest wafer off the top of it, it, it's, it certainly is. Significant to a, you know, an organization like ours that, that, you know. Certainly does a good job of fundraising, but even a small increase to that is, you know, is great, is very beneficial.
Yeah, absolutely. So thankfully Jen and Brooke are going to work on that.
Great, great, and, um. You know, we were debating just before we came here, we thought we had already approved the meeting calendar. Um, the only thing we had, go ahead, sorry.
I was just gonna say, I'm not sure, I couldn't remember, um, what months were off, so I wanted just to, to bring it up just so that, um.
We're off July and August. We'll meet in June, we'll meet in September. And we were talking before about let's, eh, you know, and I, I don't know if we have to vote on this. Um, and, and we certainly can, um, to move the meetings to seven PM.
Does that work for you, Jen?
Oh, yes.
I mean, do you prefer that? Eh, I mean, is that?
Yeah, sure. That's great.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, it's definitely seven.
Let's make a motion about that.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
I move that we begin our board meetings at seven o'clock.
I second it. I second it.
For, for the, for the rest of this year and then next year, when we have a new set of schedules, we'll just add it that way, right? So for the rest of this year, um, all in favor? I, and, okay, great, so that passes unanimously, like those. Um. And then, um. That's, yes, and again, just to reiterate, uh, which is always an attractive thing with this board, we don't have to do anything in the summer. Um. And, eh, you know, we have COVID twenty twenty-two business there, but I think we kind of know what's going on, right? I mean, we're, we're following what we're being told we should follow. Um. Keeping our fingers crossed, I guess, right?
Yes, and, um, with, with that introduction of, uh. Eating indoors, I'm also gonna put something in the newsletter, um, to the effect that we want to make sure everybody stays safe. And, um, and so we are going to have, uh, testing kits. You know, in case anybody feels like they've been exposed or they're not feeling well. Um, they can certainly call me and, um, access, have access to a test beyond what the government has sent out.
Right.
Nice.
Okay.
Our, our programming, that if you don't feel well, don't come. That, that's still part of our. Public position.
And you still have to be vaccinated.
Yes, to come to, to come to Supeson, you're gonna have to be vaccinated. That's gonna be a vaccinated only program.
It's still like at, at the exercise classes too and on the trips and all of that, okay.
Well, whereas, in order, in order to attend and in order, uh, to come to Supeson. Uh, you, you're gonna need to take off your mask and you cannot take off your mask if you're not vaccinated. And we don't want to risk, um, in- infection. This is, you know, this is, this is, you know, just the very beginning and. You know, to have thirty people, um, in a room without a mask, sitting closely, speaking, talking, projecting. Um, we, we certainly want to try to be as, as safe as we can and, and protect as many people as we can, so. Um, I think for the time being, it's going to be restricted to vaccinated only in attendance.
I think most people are vaccinated anyhow.
Yeah.
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 Well, you know, you don't, we don't really know and, you know, unless they prove it to us, but.
But you'll know with your My Senior Center, correct?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I'm able, I'm able to, if somebody tells me, oh, yeah, I am vaccinated, okay, so. Let me just put this down. And, uh, and, uh, their name on my end, nobody else sees it, of course, only I see it. Um, like, it's, it's orange around their name, or it's red around their name.
You mean, you mean, you're putting it through and, and if they tell you they're vaccinated, but they're not.
Yeah, oh, I was vaccinated and so-and-so, and some have sent me their vaccine cards. So, um, there's a space in the, in the My Senior Center app for personal information. And that's where you put like dose one, dose two, um, the dates, uh, vaccine, like booster date. And things like that, so that there's that record. And once that goes into the system and automat, there's, um, an option that I can check off. That says like, um, highlight vaccine status. So around the picture, there's this tiny little frame around your. So where your name is, there's like a little picture where you can optionally put in a picture of yourself, and if not, it's just like a, a, a question mark. But around that box, it'll have like a red, like a tiny little red frame, like when you're speaking on Zoom, it's green.
Right, right, but they, they, you, you need to get approved through their vaccine card. It's not like that My Senior Center. Access.
No, no, they would have to show me.
Right, okay.
Yeah, exactly.
Want to make sure we work on it.
I'd have to see it, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So when we come in to get our little key fob or whatever, we should bring in our vaccination cards of.
Yeah, that would, that would be helpful. I mean, I, legally, I can't say to you, I would need to see your vaccine card. Um, but however, this is a Friends program and so, um, if that's the condition that the Friends put on this program, then I can do that.
Okay.
That's great.
Yeah, it is.
So I wanna circle back to the secretary. I just had a thought. If this person that Barbara knows is not interested or doesn't work out. Is it something that, um. Uh, could be a senior project, Virginia, for a student to do? Is that appropriate or not?
I don't know.
Okay.
I do, I don't, I don't know if that would be a, a senior project. I don't think so. I think. That would be more of a community service than a senior.
Okay, okay.
Even, even with that, it, it really.
But I don't think it should be a kid.
But, yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, like I take, I take notes for the Friends, but I don't take notes the way Julie took notes.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean? This isn't.
And, and you know, not everybody will take notes the way Julie took notes.
Right, but I mean, you know, this is an official board, you know, you need more of an official professional. Setup, I would think, I mean.
You know, at one point, someone had said, you know, gee, maybe we can bring a person on to be our secretary and a member of our board. And we kind of pooh-poohed it. It was, you had missed, mentioned it was a person who was a lawyer.
Yeah, I talked to him about it and he just kind of laughed at me.
Yeah, okay.
So, okay, my other thought was. Can you run just a, a little boxed area, a text box, Jen, that mentions that we're looking for a secretary in the newsletter?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Well, do we know if, we don't know if Barbara's daughter-in-law is going to contact Patrick or not, or. Can you follow up on that, Jen, and see if, if she has, or?
Yeah.
Barbara seemed to think she was very interested in doing it.
Yeah, even if she does follow up.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, it'd be okay to do that because you may find, she may not be able to do it the whole time or something, you know.
Right.
See if there's some interest in that, so. So, and another thing I wanna, are we done through the agenda now?
I think so.
Well, I just, I just wanted to ask Jen and you don't have to answer tonight at all, and it's something for you to think about is. What more can we do to support you, Jen, that's in our authority and our purview?
Yeah, I would love for you to be able to steer me in the way of, um, grants. And, and ways that I can. Help to provide, uh, programs, um, and, and bring money in, um, to help. Ease like the burden from just the Friends. I, I really would, I would like that help a lot. That would be great. That would be really great.
Does the town, because the town must constantly be fielding oppor, grant opportunities.
You know, the person who used to do that is Barbara. Barbara was, I mean.
Oh, no, I know.
Oh, yeah, so she was, there, we do not, as a town, do not have an official grant writer. She was it. She was it.
Right, but, but the first thing we're trying to do is identify the grants, right? And then figure out what we need to do to do them. So are you, are you asking for bird dogging grants, finding it, you know, brainstorming to find where grants are coming from? Or to actually do the grants?
Um, either, either way, if you did the grant, that would be fantastic. I don't know if you, I don't know if you can, I don't. I don't know what the capability is, but that would be fantastic. That'd be really great.
Answer, you know, grants take time and you, good if you know how to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do, yeah, do you know of any grant writers that, you know, we could talk to and get some clues on how to do this?
Actually, I defer, I defer to Jerryl. I defer to Jerryl and.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jerryl and, um, has written, um, a couple of successful grants. And so she's, she's pretty good at it, um, uh. Sarah Laureate's written, uh, written a grant for the fire department, largest grant that they've ever received. And at the time, the largest that the town has ever received in one, in one shot, um. I know it takes a lot of, uh, a lot of writing, a lot of, uh, paperwork, like a lot of, you know, information needs to be, eh, eh, you know. Uh, um, found, uh, you know, about statistics and, and ta, about the town and those kinds of things. Um, it, there is a lot of legwork, but certainly, um. In the end, you know, we may, you know, have money for, uh. Technology or to rebuild, you know, a room or, you know, to do something, um, that saves. The, the Friends money and certainly saves the town money.
So, um, you know what, I'm gonna continue this conversation with my son because he knows about grant writing, so. I'll talk to him and see what I can find out because.
Awesome, that would be great.
Yeah, so, yeah, if that is something that, you know, we can pull together and help you out with, that, you know, I. We need to have you be successful.
Yeah, I, I, I really want. The senior center to be the catalyst for some really wonderful change and opportunity and ideas. Um, for this whole town, um, you know, I think sometimes we were kind of an afterthought. And I, I want us to be the forethought.
Yeah, I like that.
Oh, Barry can do it, you can, Jen.
Yeah, we all can. I mean, I can't do it by myself, certainly. You know, you guys are, are. Are really, uh, fundamental and, and bringing about, you know, all these opportunities, so. I did look for, at the DECD, uh, grant that, um, we got to even redo the senior center in terms of being able to do. Another one for the barn, but they don't have any money yet, so, yeah. But that might be, that's, that's, that would be huge and to have help to do that, I, I would be really grateful. Yeah, but that might be, that's, that's, that would be huge, and to have help to do that, I would be really grateful.
You know, the only, the only issue as we always will have near us is, you know, getting the Historic Commission on board. I'm sure they wouldn't be difficult, I'm sure it would just be a, a matter of.
Well, some of them might. So who else on there?
So this, the next door neighbor to the Senior Center, the one who had the barn, she's the, she is in charge.
Wendy Walker?
Yep, she's the next door neighbor at the Senior Center.
Is Georgette still on there?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
Well, no, we're getting ahead of ourselves, I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, there'll be layers of. Uh, you know, things we would need to do, you know, if we, it's not just a question of getting the money. You know what I mean?
It's the legwork, it's the.
Well, no, it's also there, you know, getting approvals through town, it's who owns the property, who's next door. What's allowable in this area, you know, corporate materials, you know, there's all kinds of questions that come into play, so. You know, it's not just get money. Get, you know, it's deeper than that.
It is Rox, it is Roxbury.
Anything's possible.
Anything, anything's possible and everything is known, so.
Yeah, absolutely, I, I think people would be behind that, that particular thing. And I don't think it's out of character with that part of town. You know, I, I mean, imagine going to the, you know, Historic Commission with the alternative, which is, we want to tear it down.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, it's, yeah, no, I mean, I don't think there's, there would be resistance, I'm just saying, it's, it's layered, it's not just. Get a grant or raise the money, it's.
Yeah, well, I mean, if we could help find additional money for additional programs and everything, that'd be awesome. Eh, just keep thinking and let us know what else.
And and in your company, you know, you're, you're the one that that is able to interact, you know, more readily with, with other senior centers and. You know, see what they're saying, see what they're doing, see what they've done. Yeah, they, you know, I'm sure they're not gonna hand you money, but I'm sure they hand you advice, you know, people are happy to do that. Think there's gotta be some information in Town Hall that comes in there all the time, if somebody would just pass it along.
Yeah, I actually um, have a link to um, the woman who started. The um, Province Town Commons. And um, so she's uh, more than willing to meet with me and let me know how she started and how she got it. Uh, to where it is from, 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 from nothing, from this like, you know, derelict building to, to what it is today, so. Yeah, that would be, that's gotta be really interesting.
That's a good connection.
Yeah, we'll get there.
There's a lot in the horizon. All right, so do we have any other business that we'd like to discuss or that needs to be discussed?
I don't.
All right, well, great, um, then if there's nothing else, why don't we move to adjourn? And can I get a second? I vote to adjourn altogether? Great, thanks, everybody. Hopefully, hopefully, um, um, Barbara's daughter will be an interesting prospect. You know, I mean, I'm sure they'll have, you know, maybe we could even find Julie, ask Julie to take fifteen minutes with her and give her a quick. She's still on, you know, town, uh, on a town budget, so I'd have to think. There wouldn't be any real objection to asking her to, to, you know, help us out in that transition, but.
And it's her daughter-in-law, by the way, not her daughter. It's Barbara's, Barbara's daughter-in-law.
It's, it's Alex's wife, right? The oldest son's wife.
I don't know whose wife it is, I don't know.
I think it's Alex's wife.
I think so.